Good evening. I hope you felt welcomed when you came in tonight by our information technology director, Erwin, Aaron Erwin, and then our interim fire chief, David King. Both of those gentlemen served as our greeters this evening. And if you have any cards, you want to speak on any agenda items, please get them to our clerk as soon as possible, and we'll be happy to accommodate you along those lines. It is May 17th, 2022 at 7:00 PM, and we will call this commission meeting to order. I'd like to introduce the folks who are sitting up in front of you. To my right, your left, our recording secretary, Taylor Lockhart, city clerk, Susan Dotteris, our Zone One Commissioner, Dwight Selby.
Good evening, everybody.
Our Zone Two Commissioner, Troy Kent.
Good evening, Ormond Beach.
And to my left and your right, our deputy mayor and Zone Three Commissioner, Susan Persis.
Hello, everyone.
Zone Four Commissioner, Rob Littleton, City Manager, Joyce Shanahan, Assistant City Manager, Claire Whitley, City Attorney, Randy Hayes, and for those of you listening online, I'm Mayor Bill Partington. Also way to my left and way to your right is our Police Chief with sore legs, Jesse Godfrey, back from the Police Unity Tour in Washington, DC. And then joining them shortly will be the greeter and our interim fire chief, Dave King. So that's the introductions. At this time, if you would please silence your cell phones, make sure they're turned to silent, and we will rise for the invocation given by Pastor Kevin Mahoney from Reema Ridge Baptist Church. That'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we do come before you, and we do thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, and Lord, to discuss and meet about the business of this great city. I ask, Lord, you touch the mayor and all the commissioners and all the boards, Lord, and again, Lord, guide and guide the meeting. And, Lord, again, that all will be done and with unity and wonder. Lord, thank you for each one that's in the audience. Lord, we thank you for our police department. We thank you for law enforcement, first responders. Lord, we ask that you keep each one safe and take them all home to their families safely. And, Lord, we thank you for the freedom to be able to have a meeting like this. And, Lord, lift up all those that are around the world in our armed forces defending our freedoms tonight. And, Lord, again, thank you for the blessings you give us in these things we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. And as usual, we start our meeting with some positives, presentations and proclamations, things of that nature. And tonight, it's the 2022 Mayor's Health and Fitness Challenge Awards winners. We're going to present those. And I'm just going to ask you to come up as I announce your name. We're going to go from third place to first place. We're going to do the men's category and the women's category. If you all will make a line across the front, and then we're going to get a picture of you with the commission behind you. But we will start with third place, Bill Rose, losing .2 BMI points. That's a $250 cash prize. Bill is a city employee, which is even more awesome, working over at Facilities Maintenance as a contract manager. Second place in the men's category is Chris Bile. Chris, losing 2.5 BMI points. That's a $500 cash award. And Chris is our Assistant Finance Director. Congratulations, Chris. And then first place in the men's category is Gary Brady. Gary? Gary lost 5.6 BMI points, which is awesome, and that's a $750 cash award. He's a maintenance worker employed for the city of Ormond Beach. Good stuff. And then in the women's category, Edith Kiegel. Losing two BMI points, and that's a $250 cash award. Congratulations. Nice to see you. And second is Virginia Collins. Virginia, did she make it? Well, Virginia lost 2.1 BMI points, so that was close. That's a $500 cash award. And she's an employee in our leisure services, and so we'll make sure she gets her award. Now, first place in the women's category, losing 3.9 BMI points and a $750 cash award, Congratulations to all of you. If you guys will squeeze in just a little bit, and we'll...
Congratulations to all of you. Way to go.
All right, we'll move on to audience remarks. And I have a couple cards. Let's see. We'll start with Donna Craig.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Donna Craig. I live in Ormond by the Sea, and I'm the director of, I'm the director of Dream Green Volusia. I'm delivering this speech on behalf of Suzanne Shizer, the founder of Dream Green Volusia, as she's unable to attend this evening. In 2007, Fred Costello signed the Ormond Scenic Loop and Trail Plan, representing Ormond Beach's support for the loop. In the goals and objectives, a strategy 1.4.5 of adding scenic highway protections to the city of Ormond Beach and the Volusia County Comprehensive Plans is listed. In objectives, item 2.2 states, quote, "require new development and businesses within the corridor to incorporate the scenic highway vision into their development plans," end quote. Also, in 2007, the Scenic Highway Advisory Committee recommended the local comprehensive plans include preservation and protections for the scenic loop and its historic resources as these are under development pressure. Over time, elected officials came and went, and even though Ormond Beach signed that they supported the plan, there was a chipping away of the loop through the years. The support for the loop became diminished by local governments, and we ended up with houses built right on the road, as well as reduced protections in the comprehensive plans were just never addressed. This needs to change. At the end of this month, we are putting together a committee within our own organization to pursue implementing the original loop plan the county and the city of Ormond signed off on. Our petition that launched this year already has over 700 signatures supporting established buffers, low-impact development, and land conservation on the loop. The original plan was a good one, and we'll be sending it to you via email. With 36-year-old BRI's, 22-year-old developments, and 15-year-old scenic highway plans, it really is past time to make the Ormond Scenic Loop and Trail live up to its vision. The loop was not saved by designation alone. There are action items that were supported by the city and county. So I asked the city of Ormond Beach to review, renew, and solidify its support, which it signed by resolution in 2006. Please address items in the goals and recommendations of the plan. Increasing density was never a part of the plan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Connie Colby.
Good evening. Connie Colby, 108 Roble Lane in Ormond Beach. I'd like to request the board that they could figure out the best way to prevent older residential areas of Ormond Beach, which do not have homeowners associations, from becoming rundown and neglected or abused places. Specifically, last year, there was a Senate bill which required that complaints and code violations be not initiated anonymously. This basically means that many legitimate complaints will not be reported because we have to live in the same neighborhood as the people who are violating the codes. Oftentimes, the violators don't think that the rules apply to them and would become confrontational and make life difficult for those who dare to report on their violations. The new law does provide for reporting issues relating to public health, safety, welfare, and destruction of the habitat or sensitive resources anonymously. But who decides on this choice when you make a report online? According to the Ormond Beach Code Enforcer, Ormond Beach is not proactive on this, but rather reactive. The reason given was that they don't have enough personnel to do that. We need people who will continue to follow up for a period of time after initial complaint, as too many of these people correct their violations for a few days, and then they start all over again. No neighbor wants to be continually complaining about their neighbor, especially the ones that are going to be not happy about it. Some problems I see throughout the older parts of town are houses that are rented out. Too many people are crammed into these houses, and they result with cars parked all over the yards, boats parked in the front, recreational vehicles, and business vehicles. One in particular in our neighborhood is running a business, a landscaping business in a residential area, complete with his work equipment and trucks of all kind. We also have issues with people parking their cars on the corners, and there's cars coming face to face when they're trying to come around the corners. Roads where we have no sidewalks or just one lane in each direction. I've often heard the board talking about keeping the city beautiful, but some of these scenarios are making the neighborhood look like a car lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. Next is Arthur Armstrong.
Good evening. My name is Arthur Armstrong. I live at 77 Emerald Oaks Lane over in Ormond Beach, over there. Been a resident of Ormond Beach for 22 years. Again, I'm speaking to you guys on a negative voice of the airport. Now, I've been involved with the airport for years and years and years as a participant in flying in and out of there, not as a pilot, but as a poll pilot. I've seen the growth in that area as far as the airport is concerned. And at this point, with Emmy Riddle and all the others that's going on, and the expansion of the airport that you are trying to shove down our throats, and the last meeting was a joke. It was, I was, it felt like I was backing off in a storm, being snowed out because of the way that questions could not be answered and whatnot. It was, it's very ridiculous. It's time to stop the game. It's time to take note that the public, we put you there, we expect you to protect us and do things that make sense to our community. It's not being done this way. We're spending a lot of money. We're consultants, and they're here as long as you pay. This has got to stop, right? I've been, I was a political official for 10 years in Massachusetts. My city was many times bigger than this city, and I had a lot of responsibilities. We fought different things during the time that checked our city, and we won. But the only way you win is that people stand up and say, "No" to you. We're not going to do it. We're not having an expansion. We're not going to do this. Emmy Riddle does not need to be in there. The only reason they're there is because it's cheaper to fly in and out of there than it does Daytona. I've talked to Volusia County. They would love them to be there on a full-time basis in that airport. And the expansion of jets that we looking at doing. I also own property in Bear Creek. And not too long ago, I was working on some of my properties over there, and I'm standing on the side doing something, and when that jet took off, it was the first time, I couldn't believe this, in 22 years that I've been in Bear Creek and over to the other location I spoke of, is I could smell the exhaust from the jet. And I know what it is. I'm a Vietnam vet. I was there. I did two tours in Nam. I have, I had Agent R. in so bad, it's not funny. I'm not supposed to breathe in that crap. And I didn't come to Ormond to try taking something like that. I don't think it's right. It's not necessary. The airport is not going to be in the black ever. We have a golf course now that you've closed down, and it's not going to reopen. Let's face it. It's a shambles over there. If you're going to do that, you want to take greens and make it, close them up instead of having to open up from one green to the next, because you need a crash dome. And I'm calling it a crash dome because it's not politically correct, but I'm going to say it. It's a crash dome. If you clear those trees on Bear Creek, they have those guys tax you down and come out, it will be an absolute joke. And if I ever hear from anybody that's a public official, again, that tells me, "Well, why did you buy property here in the airport? You knew it was expand, will expand," they're in trouble. And I know one's leaving us, thank goodness, and they're just sitting right up there.
Thank you.
I think you get the idea of it.
The approval of the minutes from the city commission meeting of May 3rd have been sent to the commission for review, also posted to the city's website. Any additions, deletions, or corrections, commission?
Move approval.
Second? Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign, and we will show those approved unanimously. The consent agenda, does anyone wish to pull any item off of the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'll move approval minus item H for discussion purposes.
Second?
Please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. 7H.
This is disposition item title 2022 Flood Plane Management Plan Annual Progress Report.
Commissioner Selby.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So I pulled this item. I spoke briefly to Stevens Breaker about it. This is the flood insurance item, and we are currently Class VI, the city of Ormond Beach. And as Class VI, there's up to 10 classes under the federal standards, and we, our residents get a 20% discount on flood insurance because we're Class VI. And I really just pulled this so that, so that staff could, and they may not be able to tonight, because when I talked to Steven, he said, I think he said that Becky Weedo is really the subject expert on this topic. But Class 10 can get a 45% discount on their rates. And so I was just curious, what would it take to get us to, let's say, Class VII or Class VIII? Because each time you move up, it's an additional 5% discount. So if there's something that we could do, or that, you know, the commission could do that would move us so that our taxpayers would save more money on their flood insurance, I thought that would be a good thing to do. So maybe it's, it's probably, Becky's not here, and, you know, you didn't have any advance notice on this. My apologies for that. Maybe it's something that we could talk about at a future meeting, if the commission is so inclined.
Steven, do you want to respond?
Sure. Stevens Breaker, planning director. So there are two items we are working on currently right now. One is a resiliency plan. We have funding through a Department of Environmental Protection for a resiliency plan that will help our flood plane efforts. And the stormwater master plans also underway, which will provide credits. So there's a point system. So as more that we can complete these master plans, it'll help our flood plane ratings. So we are aware of it, and we have an audit this summer, so we're hoping to move up the ranking.
Will that be brought back to us?
You will see the resiliency plan as an acceptance of the grant, so that'll be brought to you. And the stormwater plan would also be brought back to you. So yes, both plans will be.
And does that get us to the 5% or?
We're, I'm going to need your update once we know. So we're going to meet with FEMA, and we'll go through what criteria we can meet.
And then at that point, if you need a workshop?
Sure.
You'll let us know.
Okay.
Is that sufficient?
Yeah, yeah, that's great. I'll move approval of item H.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion on 7H? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And that would be the appropriate time if any commissioner wanted to comment on any of the consent agenda items. If not, we will move to public hearings, and I'll open the public hearings, ask the clerk to read 8A.
Ordinance number 2022-15, an ordinance amending Article II District Regulations of Chapter II District and General Regulations of the Land Development Code by mending Section 2-09 REA Rural Estate Agricultural Zoning District, Section 2-10 RR Rural Residential Zoning District, Section 2-12R-1 Residential Estate Zoning District, Section 2-13R-2 Single Family Low Density Zoning District, Section 2-19R-6 Multi-Family Medium High Density Zoning District, and Section 2-40 Exceptions and Supplemental Standards to amend front yard and water body setbacks, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, providing for severability, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2022-15, read by title only.
Thank you. I'll ask our planning director, Stevens Breaker, to give us the background on this item.
Stevens Breaker, planning director. So this is a Land Development Code Amendment to various zoning districts and a Section 2-40 of our Land Development Code. We have experienced a high number of variances over the last few years as properties along the waterfront are being developed or redeveloped. Our front yard average allows a viewing angle where a calculated average cannot be met. And the overall goal and the policy is to preserve view corridors of the river and to Beach Street. So the amendment seeks to allow that viewing angle to the rear yard, to the water body yard, once a calculated average setback has been done. If it cannot be met, but the viewing angles can still be met, then the applicant can move forward. It would save applicants going through variances, and we believe it also would still protect viewing angles. Staff has had the Board of Adjustment and the Planning Board review drafts, and then we took it back to the Planning Board, who recommend approval of 7 to 0 of the Land Development Code amendments.
Any questions for Steven on this one? I don't have any cards. It makes a lot of sense. I think it saves a lot of time at the BOA meetings, and the Planning Board recommended it 7 to 0. So happy to answer any questions.
I kind of have one question. I mean, I read through this thing, and I understand it. It's really, it's really sort of designed to help with the redevelopment of existing properties, right, where there, where there are redeveloped properties on either side of them, I guess, right? Or?
Correct.
I mean, that's where, that's what triggers it most often, right? Somebody comes in, they want to redevelop the property.
Correct. So there are two situations. One is a redevelopment, and the other is the land's vacant, and now somebody wants to develop it. So we require an average on the north and the south side of 300 feet. And then you average that, and it comes up to calculated average. So what has happened is there are changes in the shoreline, because it's not a continuous shoreline. So one never gets skewed, or you have a house that is towards Beach Street that was built in 1960, it skews the average. So what this does, it allows you to use the viewing angles to show that you can still, you know, have view corridors to the river. So that's allowed today in the front yard, but not in the rear yard. So that was the purpose.
And so what is that black line that is marked setback?
So that would be the calculated average setback. So if I had, let's say, a calculated average of 60 feet, and, you know, for some reason, I want to go in front of it, but I can still preserve the viewing angles, then you're allowed to proceed forward with staff approval.
Okay, so, I see. So the new structure can go beyond the calculated, beyond the calculated setback because it doesn't impede the viewing angles?
Correct.
From the, from the existing structure?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, so my question was, in the future, so the existing structure, if that somewhere down the road wanted to get redeveloped, that property wanted to get redeveloped, it could come to where? To the?
It would do a calculated average setback. So they would come up with a number. Say they would come up, as example, they would come up with that black line. And let's say that they could still meet the viewing angles, they could come anywhere where they can comply with the viewing angles.
Right. So we could get at least to the setback line, and then actually probably just ballparking it, obviously probably further than that, probably?
Correct. And remember, there are other factors when you redevelop. You know, people obviously want pools. They want other accessory structures. So they may not go to that setback line. But that setback line is based on the mean height, the mean annual height waterline, which changes and is not, again, a constant line. So you could have indentations in the shoreline, which then impacts the overall average.
And this sort of assumes that the rear of the house is square, or is a straight line. Is there anything that would prevent somebody from building a house that angles, that like points out to the river? You know what I mean? Along that?
As long as they either met the calculated average setback or the viewing angles. I mean, a lot of houses use open porches and integrate the design with their pools. So there's, there's a lot going on in the rear. And you're absolutely right. It's not a square box. But for this example, it's just how it was designed.
Because you're going to that point. But so on the new structure, if you follow that 130-degree line going out, right, towards the water?
Okay.
This house could actually come out along that 130-line, right, on an angle, instead of being, call it perpendicular to the shore. It really, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
And it would probably have to come to a point, because there's, this diagram doesn't show a house to the left, but assuming there is one.
Right. But it would always maintain the minimum viewing angle.
Right.
And that is?
Right.
The goal of the endeavor?
Right. Okay, I just wanted to, I just, I didn't know if that, the point where these, and it's where these two lines intersect?
Correct.
Right? That's the, that's the point at which you can't go any further if you're perpendicular, but you can follow that 130-line if you wanted to.
Correct. So each, each angle of the house will have, this will be 110 degrees minimum, and this will be 130 degree minimum.
Right.
So they will have existing, they will have viewing angles.
I'm glad to see you doing this. I think this is a really good thing. I think it, it helps clarify it and makes it a lot simpler for people. And it protects the people, the adjoining people, the adjoining neighbors with their view angle. So I support it.
Thank you. Any other questions for Steven? I don't have any cards. Just need a motion and a second.
I'll move, okay, I'll move ordinance 2022-15.
And I'll second. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. 8B.
Ordinance number 2022-16, an ordinance authorizing the execution and issuance of a first amended development order for a planned residential development known as Plantation Oaks, authorizing an amendment to, one, allow additional residential units in Phases I, III, and IV of the PRD to total 173 residential units; two, lift the age restriction and prohibit manufactured homes in Phase III of the PRD; three, allow public streets in Phase IV of the PRD; and four, remove approximately 33.10 acres of land purchased by Volusia County from the PRD, said property being generally located along the east side of Interstate 95, south of Halifax Plantation Subdivision, west of Old Dixie Highway, and north of US Highway 1, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2022-16, read by title only.
Thank you. And Steven, if you would, give us an intro on this item as well.
Again, Stevens Breaker, planning director. So this is a planned residential development amendment for the Plantation Oaks subdivision. The subdivision is located east of Old Dixie Highway, shown here in blue, west of I-95, and then is bisected by Plantation Oaks Boulevard, and US 1 would be located right here. The project is part of the National Gardens Development of Regional Impact. Development of Regional Impacts were done, started in the 1970s. They were state approvals, regional approvals. They had multiple entities reviewing projects because these projects would have impacts beyond a jurisdiction. They would have regional impacts. It was originally approved for 3,930 residential units on about 2,000 acres. Over time, in 2001, the density was reduced to 2,115 residential units within the Development of Regional Impact. In 2004, there are areas of Mission Pines and Tall Pines that were removed, 406 acres, this abutted Old Dixie Highway. So these acreage, this acreage was purchased by the state for preservation so that it could not be developed. In 2002, Volusia County approved the first development order for this project. It allowed 1,577 residential units. There were some other minor amendments through, through time, but focusing on 2015, there was a but focusing on 2015, there was a staff amendment that allowed the construction of lakes and open space and move of the golf course that was originally approved. And the City Ormond Beach was also identified as a utility provider. In 2016, there was a memorandum of understanding approved by Volusia County Schools that allowed the school site for the Development of Regional Impact to be moved, which is one of the amendments we'll cover tonight. The City Ormond Beach became involved with Plantation Oaks starting in 2015 as a utility provider. There was an interlocal service boundary agreement, amendment in 2019, which then led to annexation, which then led to comprehensive plan amendments. The maximum density allowed under comprehensive plan is 1,947 units. In 2001, the city established the city zoning. We took it from Volusia County into the City Ormond Beach. And we used the exact same Volusia County development orders, with one exception, is we deleted the age restriction for Phase 1 and required site-built homes instead of manufactured homes. That same year, staff approved a minor amendment which relocated 76 lots within Phase 1 based on the sale of 33 acres to Volusia County for parkland which abutted Old Dixie Highway. So this is the original approved master plan, so it allows 1,577 units. It's broken into phases, so Phase 1. Phase 2 isn't, is not undergoing any amendments. It'll stay the same at 427 units. It'll be manufactured homes, and it'll have its own recreation and its own amenities. Phase 3 is located south of Plantation Oaks Boulevard, and Phase 4 is located abutting I-95. The current application before you tonight is 1,750 units. When the applicant first submitted to the Site Plan Review Committee, that number was 1,868 units. So through the Planning Board actions and consent to decrease the units, the units have been decreased to 1,500, 1,750. And what I'd like to do is go through the, quickly through the amendments. There are seven amendments total. So the first amendment is in that Phase 1 area. Again, this would be Old Dixie Highway on the bottom, Old Dixie Highway here. Plantation Oaks is located here. So the original development order allowed 669 lots. The original application sought an increase of 80 lots, 749. As the applicant went through the Planning Board hearing, there was a request by the Planning Board to decrease the lots by 40. The applicant consented, and the Planning Board recommended to increase the number of lots, 40 lots, from the approved 669 to 709. That was a 5 to 2 vote for approval by the Planning Board. In Phase 3, the Planning Board had similar concerns, and the concern was really utilizing the entire golf course land area for lots. There was a desire to have additional open space and additional recreation. So instead of using the entire area for lots, the goal was to reduce the density to allow that recreation and open space. So this phase had an approval of 481 lots originally. The original application was for 86, so that takes it to 567. Planning Board again reduced the number of lots by 43, which would bring them to 524. And that vote was a 4 to 3 recommendation of approval from the Planning Board. Also, within Phase 3, the application sought to lift the age restriction and prohibit manufactured homes. The Planning Board recommended approval of seven to zero on both Items 3 and 4. The Phase 4 was the application number Item 5. So this is the area that was previously identified for a school site. Beginning in 2016, there was a memorandum of understanding with the Volusia County Schools, so the schools identified they no longer needed a school in this area, in this project. They also acknowledged that the project met the exemption for school impact fees. So the arrangement that was made while the property was under Volusia County jurisdiction was the developer exchanged a 14-acre site next to West Side Elementary to expand that school. They also paid $500,000 in school impact fees for the age-restricted lots, and the school board released this land area back to the developer. So within the development order, there is no use identified for this parcel. The applicant originally applied for 125 lots. The Planning Board again expressed concern and sought a reduction. The applicant agreed to a 90-lot subdivision, a reduction of 35 lots, and the Planning Board recommended denial by a 3 to 4 vote. This area is not the same as Phase 1 and 3. It's not part of the golf course. There wasn't open space and lakes proposed. This was land area that was meant for a elementary or a middle school site. Phase 4 also seeks to allow public streets. Within the remainder of the subdivision, all the streets are private and maintained by the HOA or subdivisions. There are out parcels that need to have public access within Phase 4, which is the request for, to allow public streets. The last request is to take the Volusia County Parkland of 33 acres and to remove it from the development order. It would have its own land use and zoning that we will bring back to you likely in August or September of this year. So this chart attempts to summarize everything I just said. It started at 1,577 units. The original application was 1,867. So that would be an increase of 291 lots. Through the Planning Board, there is a reduction of lots to 1,750. It's important to note that the Planning Board did not recommend approval of the 90 lots. They only approved an increase of 83 lots. So these are kind of the numbers that get all jarballed around, but the application is the increase to 1,750. Some of the quick attributes of the subdivision, the gross density of the project is 1.72 acres. The net density, if you took out all wetlands, would be 1.93 units per acre. So in both situations, they're below 2 units per acre, which we would consider a low-density residential development. There is 157 acres in conservation. There are 42 acres as open space. The project has preserved the natural buffer along Plantation Oaks of 50 feet, where 20 feet would be required, and there's also agreement along I-95. The residential density is less than the Development of Regional Impact allows, and less than the comprehensive plan allows. As far as infrastructure, the Site Plan Review Committee reviewed the infrastructure impacts. The project has constructed the Plantation Oaks Boulevard. They've constructed sidewalks both along that roadway and internal. There was in your packet a determination of school capacity. So the school board found that there was no reason to deny the rezoning amendment based on school capacity. Each individual subdivision would have its own review. There was a traffic study that was done. Even though the number of lots is vested through the Development of Regional Impact, staff required a traffic study that was reviewed by an independent traffic engineer and Volusia County traffic engineer. And again, there is 43 acres of recreation. Staff provided in your packet concerns we've received, there were a total of six correspondence, three before the pack went out, and three while the pack went out. Staff has not received any additional concerns since the Planning Board by written correspondence. These, this is a summary of the seven amendments. The Planning Board took each item individually. It is up to the commission whether to take them individually, and the options will be approved as presented, approval of the conditions, or deny the individual applications or the entire applications. And they've required a separate meeting on June 7.
Thank you, Stephen. And there may be more questions for you during our discussion, but right now, we're going to go to cards.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Up first is Jerry Valsick.
Good evening. I'm Jerry Valsick. I live at 236 Onwood Drive on the Ormond Beach side. I have a question concerning Pennsylvania Avenue. Pennsylvania Avenue borders the southern end of the Plantation Oaks development. It runs east and west from I-95 to Broadway Boulevard. The avenue is not paved at the present time. So my question is, when is Pennsylvania Avenue expected to be paved, and what utilities, including water and sewage, will be installed? I raised this question at the previous Planning Board meeting and got a verbal reply. I'm again asking this question here so it can be a matter of record in this commission proceeding. I will appreciate a reply. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Connie Colby.
Good evening. Connie Colby, 108 Roble Lane, Ormond Beach. The development order for Plantation Oaks required a school site. A 25-acre area was put aside to satisfy this agreement. In the meantime, I'm not going to talk about the history at all. The developer is now stating that the site is, which was 25 acres to start with, they're calling for 53 acres rather than the 25 acres, where he wants to add 90 homes at this location. I'm wondering where that extra acreage came from. Also, why is this area being, with this amendment? Plantation Oaks, which is a separate road. This new development of the former school site is not gated and has public roads, smaller lot sizes, and does not match the criteria for Plantation Oaks. This sounds like it should have been a new separate development with its own hearings. My original concern was the school-student population impact with, which according to the school facility services seemed to me because there were supposed to be 1,441 family homes, and there were only 394 students. They do have disclaimer to that, that your child may not sign to the school, depending on the capacity. Information will be imparted to anybody who signs there. There's also the 291 new homes that Ridge Haven is proposing up at that location. And there was a legal notice in today's news jour about another place up in Long Old Dixie Highway for 64 acres in that area. I spoke to a lady named Stephanie Docher yesterday. She told me that she said that the school capacity report, she said it's a condition that I didn't have before, that there was a guarantee that site, that Halifax Plantation was for school, that possibly the library, something else, though. And that there's more of that, that the pathways at elementary school, so that maybe. In my opinion, that's not the right time to back house and definitely, it's too bad that that was. It might be better to, for a few years, before disposing of that land at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Eddie Taylor.
Hi, I'm Eddie Taylor. I live at 19 Village Drive in the Village of Pine Run. I'm also too concerned about the Ridge Haven development. I know it was said in a meeting previously, it's 103 acres, and they were telling us that they're going to give us 167,000 square feet of buffer. Well, for those that don't know this, it takes 43,500 square feet per acre. So out of 103 acres, that's less than five acres of buffer. That's not very much at all. And the other thing is the amount of homes. They're saying three houses per acre. You know, that's, we live in a development where you have one house to acre and a quarter, to, you know, acre and three quarters. So I would like to see that number brought down. And again, the land, you know, he's got so much partially developed now, where he's taken out all the trees and everything in Plantation Oaks. I don't see where he should go into this development here and start removing all the trees until maybe he finishes what he started on the other side. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Philip Widener, Widener?
Hi, my name is Philip Widener, and I live at 831 Oleander Avenue in Holly Hill, and I'd like to make recommendations to the city to place an addendum to the proposed amendment regarding the request for additional housing on Plantation Oaks subdivision. According to the traffic impact analysis that was done, it states that only 4% usage during peak hours will be impacted on the corner of Old Dixie Highway and Plantation Oaks Boulevard. The addendum I recommend to be added to the amendment is for the traffic on this intersection be monitored on a regular basis, and if the traffic exceeds a predetermined excessive amount, the measures must and will be done in order to eliminate the excessive traffic that occurs. Measures to reduce traffic that could be done would be to eliminate the intersection altogether, which I personally favor, or you can install gates on both the east and west entrances, or establish alternative routes to west US 1 or towards north through the Plantation, Halifax Plantation subdivision. Not only should this intersection be monitored, but all intersections that impact Old Dixie Highway should be monitored. Having one main entrance off US 1 to Plantation Oaks isn't really out of the question. There's just a subdivision down the road called Plantation Bay that has just one main entrance off US 1, and this subdivision was built by IC Homes and is twice the size of Plantation Oaks, and appears to be functioning just fine. So why all the fuss about these intersections entering Old Dixie Highway? Well, let me take you back to when our family moved here 50 years ago in 1968. We lived in a neighborhood called Woodmere that was just a mile from Tamoka State Park, and we would travel down Old Dixie Highway frequently, taking day trips, going fishing, crabbing, and family picnics. And when we traveled down Old Dixie Highway, we would start at Tamoka, we'd enter through Old Dixie, go down Walter Boardman Road, and get all the way to High Bridge without seeing any commercial areas whatsoever. Unfortunately, that's not the case today. Could have been prevented with proper care and planning without allowing intersections to enter Old Dixie Highway. We should treat Old Dixie Highway like it's our own personal Blue Ridge Parkway, where locals and tourists alike can experience the true nature preserve that this area has to offer. Sure, many of you have traveled down or Blue Ridge Parkway and have seen how they restrict a lot of commercialization on these highways to protect their nature preserve. So right now, we're at somewhat of a gray area. What kind of impact Plantation Oaks will infringe upon our nature preserve? I believe only 100 houses have been built so far, so we still have a lot more houses that are going to be built so we can analyze what kind of impact that will be having once those houses are built. This is why I feel it's important to add an addendum to the proposed amendment so we can do our best to defend and protect the areas from potential harm. Or maybe we should just table the event altogether. So let's do our best to protect our nature preserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Missy Herrera.
Hi, my name is Missy Herrera. I live at 111 North St Andrews. I'm going to read off of my notes because I have the habit to get up here and ramble a little bit. But I've been a resident of Ormond Beach for over 30 years. My husband's family has been a resident. I've been here for five generations. The reason I share that with you is that often when these, when I attend meetings, we hear analogies of, you know, people don't want to share what we have. So I just want to just give a little background. So after receiving misinformation regarding the golf course of my neighborhood, I've been attending Planning Board and City Commission meetings when I came, so that I can learn more about the process of how developments get rezoned and how amendments change[1738.36] change the nature of previously approved projects. In my experience, when residents show up to express concerns regarding developers' requests for rezoning or amendment, the general feel is demonstrated in an analogy commonly shared with residents from a planning board member regarding a sandbox. Often when residents come, we hear this analogy, I've heard it multiple times, is that we don't want to share the sand in our sandbox with people who are coming. Yes, you came from New Jersey a year ago, you bought a house, you don't want to share it with any, you don't want anybody else to come. Or you're here thirty years or you're here five generations and you don't want to share it with anybody else. Well, we're already sharing it when we're sitting in bumper to bumper traffic on Bernada. We're already sharing it if you have the unlikely experience of going to an emergency room and waiting for four to eight hours to be seen. We're sharing it, right? At some point, where do we say, yes, we have a responsibility to provide housing, but at what point do we recognize how that's affecting our quality of life? So I also heard a really great analogy too about going to a movie theater. So if you go to the movie theater and it's sold out and the people in the movie theater say, well, we have a responsibility to provide all these other people with the same experience. They want to come in the movie too. So you let them all come in so the house is packed and no, it's not good for anybody. So I just, I really am trying to learn more and educate myself and not be, you know, emotionally reactive, but it's just hard. So I feel like we're really at a crossroads. I wonder if this particular plan was presented to you twenty years ago without the golf course and without the school, if you would have looked at it and weighed the loop was twenty years ago, if you would have been, that's crazy, we're not going to approve all of that. I know the corridor management plan for the Ormond scenic loop and trail includes buffers and conservation. It had strong local support, including a letter of support from the city of Ormond Beach. The plan wasn't implemented over the years just because players have changed. I ask that you don't approve additional two hundred and ninety-one homes to add to the already approved one thousand five hundred and seventy-seven. Two amendments seeking to increase the National Gardens D R I, this with two hundred and ninety-one homes and at Dixie Ridge with a hundred and forty-four will mask out the density in what we all know and cherish as we. Thanks.
Thank you. And now the applicant, Parker Mitchenberg.
Parker Mitchenberg, seventeen twenty-nine Ridgewood Avenue. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. As usual, Stephen did an excellent job of presenting the project. We came in to the planning board and are eliminating the golf course from the school site. Through the discussion at the planning board, we decided to reduce the number of units we were asking. So in phase one, I was asking for eighty additional homes, reduced it to forty. Phase two, eighty-six, reduced to forty-three. On the school site, it's next to ninety-five. It fronts on Pennsylvania, a county dirt road. We were asking originally for a hundred and twenty-five lots, a little smaller sized lot at fifty by one twenty-five. The current zoning lot size in Plantation Oaks is a fifty-foot wide lot. So there was a comment made, they were smaller than Plantation Oaks, but actually they were the same width. With the resemital, if you look at the details of it, we went to a sixty-foot wide lot with seven and a half foot side yard setbacks and went from the hundred and twenty-five unit asked down to ninety. So I'm a lifelong resident, real proud of the development, proud of Plantation Oaks Boulevard and will answer any questions, but I appreciate your support.
Thank you. Any questions for Parker at this time?
Yeah, absolutely. First of all, let me just say that I did have a meeting with Mr. Mitchenberg about the project and thank you for your time. It was helpful to hear your side of it. Can you address the question that was raised about Pennsylvania Avenue? That's used to me.
Yeah, the gentleman that spoke owns two lots on Pennsylvania Avenue, so I'm sure he's very interested in when the road will be paved. It's my fourth phase, so it'll probably be the last section to be developed. I would imagine if the market stays good, within a few years, it'll be developed, but I don't want to say, hey, we're going to pave the road in two years because if the market changes, it could be a while. I mean, I've been putting money into Plantation Oaks for almost twenty years and so I can't really forget. We do plan with phase four on paving Pennsylvania. There will be a lift station and water line extension. The water line would service the gentleman's lots because it'll go right by it. But back to the question, I would hope within a couple of years, but that is my last phase. So if the market stays like it is, a couple of years, it'll probably get developed. If it doesn't, it'll be longer than that.
And then for the benefit of everybody, all, other than Plantation Oaks Boulevard, all of the streets in Plantation Oaks, except for phase four, are private roads, right?
Yes, the phase one, phase two, and phase three are gated. They have public utilities, so city of Ormond, water and sewer, but they're private streets maintained by homeowner association.
And why did you decide not to have private streets in phase four?
In phase four, there's an out parcel by the existing borrow pit and it has a paper street, county road that leads to it. So I couldn't gate the road because I have to provide public access to the out parcel.
And there was a comment made by one of the speakers about the school site. Did it grow from twenty-five acres to fifty acres or?
Now, what that's about is there's twenty-four and change acres of upland property that was the school site. The stormwater management for the school site is the existing twenty-plus acre borrow pit. Then there's another four or five acres of buffer next to ninety-five. So that's where that fifty acres came from.
And why, why, why did the school board decide that they don't need that site? And, and you had, you were dedicated it, I guess, to the school board, right?
Well, what, what happened, Stephen mentioned about the D R I. So the D R I for National Gardens included Ormond Lakes, this property and other properties. As part of the D R I, there was a requirement to provide a twenty-four acre school site. So that happened to reside in Plantation Oaks. Then Ormond Lakes got developed, it was removed from the D R I. There was four hundred and seven acres purchased by the state that now is part of the Tomoka State Park, kind of next to Old Dixie on the east side. So we were approached by Sarah Lee Morrissey at the school. My partner, Ronnie Bloodson, I own the parcel next to West Side Elementary in Daytona. The school board had an interest in expanding West Side Elementary. There is a school site in Halifax Plantation that's not been developed because there's not that many school kids up there. So it was deemed by the school board that they didn't need the site for school, but they did want our alternate site in Daytona. So that's, we ended up giving them that site instead, got the school site back.
Oh, so, and can you explain what transpired with the golf course? Because as, I mean, you're, you used to be a golfer, I know, I'm a.
Yeah.
You know, that's a sensitive topic in Ormond.
Originally, it was planned to build a championship golf course. I was excited about doing it twenty years ago. It was fully designed, Clifton Easel was the golf course architect. We had a fully designed cart barn, maintenance building, clubhouse with a nineteenth hole restaurant. Then the recession hit, things changed with golf and you guys have seen that here locally, Tomoka Oaks, Riverbend, Indigo, others that Palm Coast, a couple of the courses up there. What happened was the cost of owning and operating golf courses got higher and higher. The cost of developing holes, twenty-five, thirty years ago, it was around forty thousand a hole. I haven't checked recently, but last time I checked, it was like a hundred and sixty thousand a hole. And then the thing that didn't happen since, I used to play a lot of golf, don't play much now, but you can still play golf at a lot of the courses like Riverbend, not Riverbend anymore, but Riviera, for about the same as you paid twenty years ago. So the, the greens fees haven't kept up with the cost to operate and maintain and build golf courses. So unless you're, you know, a very successful course with high greens fees, et cetera, they just don't make any money.
Any other questions for Parker? Commissioner, we can go ahead and make our disclosures at this time. Commissioner Selby, you're covered.
Yeah, Parker, before you sit down? Thank you. So yeah, I, I met with Mr. Mitchenberg as well to talk about this, this project specifically. I just publicly want to say, this is just, just my opinion, but I think you're a great guy and you're a, you're a local guy. You're an excellent engineer and I appreciate the work you've done all around Bush County. That being said, refresh my memory, how many acres did Bush County purchase from you for the buffer?
It was thirty-three.
So I've not told you this and I've not publicly talked about this, but when that happened and it was me being naive about the issue, I thought, okay, that's being purchased, you're being made whole. I thought. Even Stephen. But then I learned that those units, you decide you want to put back into your development, right? How many units was that?
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six. And those all went back in? I'm just going to tell you, that rubbed me the wrong way. I just thought, you know, it was purchased and they wanted that buffer, they've got the buffer, but now that's going to be put back into your development. Stephen Spraker, excellent, absolutely excellent. He said it, the city considers this low-density residential development. I'm not saying no to this, but this is a, this is a big deal. One thousand seven hundred and fifty homes? This man and I have been on this commission nineteen years and our growth has been one percent per year. So looking at this, we're looking at, you know, I don't know, on the low end, maybe two thousand more residents, you know?
Probably more than that, Troy.
It's going to be more than that. That's why, that's why I said on, on the low end. And that's a big change. And the people that are here that have spoken about this, many of them live near this. The gentleman that's, his family's been here for fifty years, you know, I think about after World War Two, my grandfather, my grandfather moving here and raising my mother and the stories they had about the loop. And I don't want to be that guy that says, well, you know, times change, so things change and you got to go with the changes. Because we grew up crabbing for blue crabs and we thought we were having fun, but my mom told us later in life, we were catching dinner. And, and I think, and you grew up like that as well. That's why I started this with, you're a good, you're a good guy. I see some of the trepidation and concerns that the planning board had. It struck me when the city considers this low-density residential development and I get it, per acre, what they're saying, but Commissioner, that's almost two thousand homes and it's considered low-density residential development. A little concerning, maybe a little more than concerning. I, I'm glad Commissioner Selby asked the questions about the school site. I'm glad you asked the questions about the golf course. And I think that, I don't think, I know you, you end with a great product and your name is on this and that's important to you and you want to be a good neighbor, but. Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, have we had a larger development that we've approved with like ready to build homes in twenty years? I just don't know that I can remember one. I don't know if that's why I'm struggling with this a little bit, but.
Ormond Crossing is a little bigger.
But, but, and you're right, it's, it's way bigger, but we've been talking about that since I got on the commission for twenty years.
Understood.
And not until the Ford family got involved, you know, two years ago or so, three years ago, has, has there been any type of, of movement out, out there? This, this is, I, I get it. I get it why people are concerned about this, Parker, and I think you get it too.
Yes, sir.
I think I cut you off earlier. You were going to tell me something about those thirty acres.
Yeah, what I was going to say is when we were here last time for the amendment.
Yeah.
And then you could see the amendment that was done. When the county approached me to purchase the parkland, there's ten thousand acres of park across the street. Parker, the taxpayer, really wasn't in favor of it. So when it was, I'll say the deal was made, it was understood at the county level that those units were going to be relocated into the rest of Plantation Oaks. And when we came in for the amendment before you guys, I probably didn't explain it very well, but it was explained that those units were going to be relocated into Plantation Oaks. You know, I appreciate what you're saying on, yeah, you know, I got paid for it, plus I got the seventy-six units, but those lots.
Sorry to point it out like that.
Yeah. Those lots though on Old Dixie were the nicest lots in the whole development. You know, we front on I ninety-five, the lots next to ninety-five are not desirable. We front on the loop, not anymore. I don't own any property on the loop now. The county purchased it. And those lots would probably have, I'm picking a number, a fifty to eighty percent premium over the same size lot next to I ninety-five. So originally, the purchase price that I had suggested to the county was the average price that lots are selling for in Plantation Oaks. And then I was asked by a few of the council members to reduce the price, which I did, down to what we ultimately agreed to. So I probably, right now, with the value of the lots, I sold those for half of what I could sell them for today to a residential builder. And they were fronting on a hundred and seventy-five foot buffer conservation easement next to the scenic highway we all love. So those were prime lots, the best lots I had. So I just wanted to put that into context.
Appreciate it. Mayor, if I may.
Let me go to.
Okay.
And we're getting way too far into discussion. This was just to do our disclosures and then we have, we're going to go item by item and all of us are going to get to talk as much as we want.
Okay, I just, I, I will just then stop at my disclosure. I met with Parker Mitchenberg as well about this development and then I'll wait.
Great. Commissioner, what did you?
I also spoke with Parker Mitchenberg about this development.
Thank you. And I met Parker, I think it was last Wednesday. We drove all over.
Gave you the tour.
Luckily, you've got a four-wheel drive, four-wheel drive vehicle. So Commissioner, I'd like to kind of just go item by item if that's okay with you. It seems like the most logical way to do it unless somebody else has a different idea. Randy?
On the floor, as presented, and then take them one at a time in case there are any amendments to that and then you can come back and vote on the total package. If you do them one by one, then you're not going to have a, a primary motion on the floor.
Sounds good.
I, I would make an emotion to approve, I, then I guess there's seven issues or seven things that we need to vote on, that we approve items three, four, six, and seven and talk about the others.
Is that what you were thinking, Randy?
Just a motion in a second to approve as presented and then you can take the, the items one through seven in whatever order you want to do.
One at a time. And so, do you want to withdraw and just make a motion for discussion purposes?
Okay, I'll withdraw that and I make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second him, actually.
Moved and seconded for discussion and now we can go one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. And Parker, you can have a seat. If somebody has a question, yes, sir, they'll call you back.
I'm here, you need me.
Thank you. And Stephen, you're on call as well. All right, let's go with, let me find my chart here. Item one, which I believe.
Let's make sure we're all on the same page too.
Page six, eight, seven, for me. Item one was phase one, convert a portion of the golf course within phase one to add forty non-age restricted fee simple lots, bringing the number up to seven hundred and nine. This request was reduced to forty units at the planning board meeting and the approval from the planning board was five to two on that. So is there a motion to approve or deny or make some amendment to item one?
I'll, may I say something?
Sure.
Yeah, I would like to suggest that we decrease the lots. I, I can't vote for that many lots. I think it's too many. And basically, the way I feel, I, I know that Parker has the right to develop this area, it's his property and he does great developments and I know whatever he does will be great, will, will look wonderful. I just have, my concern is, I feel like we don't need to develop every single green space. There's not many areas left in Ormond Beach to develop as it is. And so I just, I just really think we need to reduce the number of units in this development.
And it was at four thou, almost four thousand units. Then in two thousand and one, I guess it was down to half of that, a little over half of that, two thousand one hundred and fifteen. I guess it was still in the county at that time. And now it's a few hundred below that as proposed and then the planning board reduced it even further. So it's been reduced, reduced, and reduced. And what number would you say we reduce it to if we were going to go lower than the seven oh nine?
I, I didn't have a specific number in mind because I, I kind of wanted to talk, I guess I wanted to kind of talk about one, two, and five. Those were my things. I just wanted to hear what everybody. Those were my things, I just wanted to hear what everybody else felt, too. There's areas in the, on the maps that I saw that Parker shared with me that I thought looked too dense, and I'd like to see maybe some more open space recreation areas. Because I, I like, I like how it's looking, I, I really do, but I just think there's other areas that we could reduce to create more green space, more recreation space, so it just doesn't look so crowded in.
So can we approve items three, four, six, and seven that came with unanimous approvals from the planning board, and that'll leave us with one, two, and five, which are apparently the main ones that you're hoping to discuss, Deputy Mayor?
Yes, that would be great.
Is the rest of the commission okay with that? So can we get a motion to approve items three, four, six, and seven?
I move to approve items three, four, six, and seven.
Second.
Any further discussion on that? Please call the board.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And now we'll go back to one, and I guess if someone has a motion, um, we can discuss that, or it's open, we're basically in open discussion.
I'd prefer to ask Stephen a question, sort of with the mindset of the planning.
Commissioner Littleton, and then we'll go to Commissioner Selby.
Stephen, Phase Four, which is the school site, is that cleared yet? Are the trees still there?
Um, I know, I, I believe the fires in nineteen ninety-eight went through there, I'm not sure, i- i- the applicant is saying it is clear.
Okay, okay. And also, the planning board reduced by half for phases one and three. Why wouldn't we want, if, if we were to give more density, why wouldn't we want the homes where the road, where the roads and the infrastructure and the tree clearing are already at? Why would we, why, why would we do that? Why couldn't we offset those, that density in the phases with the roads and the infrastructure already there, as opposed to Phase Four, where there is nothing so far?
So my, my reading of what the planning board's actions were, was to reduce the density where the golf course was formerly located. So they desire to maintain some of their recreation and open space. As it got into Phase Four, I believe there was a general philosophy to reduce the development, which led to the applicant seeking ninety lots, and the planning board then denying that. So it really is a policy decision of what the, what the correct number of units. There, there, there will be infrastructure and, and to all the phases, again, the private streets, private sidewalks.
What is that, sort of my point, I'll speak to the commission now, is if there, you know, people have mentioned about tree clearing, and we know how land is developed, if the trees are already gonna be knocked down, the dirt's gonna be dug, dug up, the road and the infrastructure's already gonna be there, I mean, it already has a lot of green space and open space there, as what will be planned out, at least with, with what I saw with the eighty and eighty-six homes. It, I'd rather the density go there than, as opposed to Phase Four, you know, if, if there's even support for Phase Four. But you, you see what I'm saying? Like, if, if we can preserve Phase Four a little bit, we can have the homes where the homes are already gonna be, and the sewer lines, and the roads, and the such.
So we're trying to understand what your, either what your motion is, or how, what your numbers are. You're saying leave item one and item two at the same numbers that they came to us from the planning board, and then reduce by some amount the ninety on Phase Four?
The idea I'm floating is, if the original thing wa, which was eighty in Phase One, eighty-six in Phase Three, that's eighty-three more homes, and then Phase Four, you know, if there's support for it at all, that density, that amount of homes is basically taken care of. 'Cause, 'cause he's asking for ninety in Phase Four.
And then what, what would happen to Phase Four, then? It would just remain vacant land?
Probably.
Okay.
I mean, it, it's an idea I'm throwing out.
Yeah.
See, see, I would rather see, you know, not too many homes built in Phase Four, but take away in Phases One, yeah, one and two, and, and, and that one and two, because I think there's some areas there that just like, like I said, like, two screens together, just, there's just too many.
I think you mean one and three.
One and three.
Two is the manufactured home park.
Yeah, sorry, one and three, I apologize.
Yep, between the items and the phases, Stephen, this is hard to follow, and I know that's not your fault, there's no other way to do it, but it gives you a headache, for sure. Commissioner Selby?
Yeah, one consideration, Commissioner Littleton, to your suggestion, is that, is my understanding that Phase Four, that's the school site, right, Parker?
Yes.
And it's also right up against the interstate.
Yes.
And it's also the place where there are some private lots that are owned by others. So one of the things that, that developer, that, you know, that Mr. Mitchenberg is doing is he's gonna build roads that'll then provide access to these other property owners that right now don't really have any, they don't really have any way to develop that land. So that is kind of an advantage, and also because it's maybe a little bit less attractive land because of its proximity to the interstate, this will provide an alternative housing, you know, with, I think it's slightly narrower side setbacks and so forth, so it'll be at a di, probably be at a different price point, you know, that'll help with the affordability issue and so forth. So it'll be a, a different, I, I envision that that'll be a different sort of neighborhood, you know, with Inplantation Oaks. I did have one, one item that I neglected to ask Mr. Mitchenberg, and I wonder if you could just address it. Mr. Mitchenberg, there was a comment about the entrance onto Old Dixie Highway, and if you could just address the, sort of how that came about.
In the original DRI, it was either four or five access points were permitted in the original DRI to Old Dixie Highway. Also, in the original DRI, Plantation of the Bullard was a two-hundred-foot rideaway, it's gonna be a four-lane road. And at the time, this was a long time before scenic highway designation, it was gonna be four lanes from Plantation of the Bullard all the way up to Phase One, Alabakas Plantation. Maybe thirty-five years ago, with the Onion Pier, designed for Phase of Alabakas Plantation, one of the few residential subdivisions that actually has super-elevated roads. So this is the phase that's kinda north of Olmwood. If you drive the main road through there, at the time, the Onion Pier, the Onion Pier is, it did the four-lane road on Old Dixie, a four-lane road through Plantation of the Bullard. And it gets super-elevated roads at Phase One. What that means is you take it faster. So that was kinda the original plan, and the DRI allowed those access points. Through our zoning activities, the county reduced it to one connection. There was a lot of late public hearings, a lot of debate about just making it a whole side, not have a connection there. You know, I lived right down the road from it. Today is a good example. The road at Hydris is uncharted. I couldn't come to it, or come here through Compost State Park, because our road's uncharted. Pine Street Drive, it goes a little bit underwater, it warms lakes, not too much, it's easily dry through it. But Plantation of the Bullard, that design, it was, it's high and dry, it doesn't flood, it provides another point of access from south to Alabakas Plantation, as well as the people that build Old Dixie. So I don't know if I answered your question, White, or if I'm right.
Thank you. So Mayor, do you need a motion on, on, you wanna go with item one?
We can go with one, unless you think you can get one, two, and five approved at the same time, Randy?
I don't have a clue, to be honest with you, but...
Well, I mean, my thought with Phase Four, item five, is to reduce that to forty-five lots from ninety, that cuts it in half. And my thinking, and Parker, you can correct me if I'm wrong, or Stephen, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is you get rid of forty-five of those lots closest to ninety-five, and maybe replace that with a couple soccer fields or multi-use fields, and a fishing area on the pond there, that's a recreational amenity for the, for your entire project. And then I would be inclined to leave items one and items two where they're at, because I think the planning board did a really good job of negotiating over quite a period of time to, to get to that point and get approval. It's just that Phase Five, ninety lots, they couldn't, they could not agree. And so, I mean, that's, that's what I'm thinking, but, Commissioner, it's, it's ultimately our decision, and we can talk about it and see where we end up.
No, I, like I said, I would like to see, I would rather see the lots in Phase Four and reduce them in Phase One and Phase Three. Reduce homes in Phase One and Phase, Phase Three.
How many?
You know, it's like an area, like, I, in Phase One, I guess what it is, I didn't count them, but it's the, it's the orange area, and then in Phase Three, it's the peach-colored area. I don't have it, I don't have the number, well, there, it looks like there is on that, on that, um, it looks like there's a hundred and, no, eighty-two, there might be a hundred and three lots up on that right corner, Parker, I'm not sure, it's, I'm looking at the key on the right-hand side. There's a key, I'm, I'm kinda blowing it up on my screen.
Are you thinking of Phase One?
Phase One, Phase One. It's the upper right-hand corner, if you're looking at the map, and it looks like there's a hundred and three lots.
Compared this to the maps, the one on the left is the current plan.
Correct.
And you can see the big green area, if you want to even go to the left, although you have a little place. Okay, this is the current plan, and what you see is, we've got a buffer next to ninety-five, that white line has, and then there's a stormwater pond, and then there's the green area there that says future development. So that's the area that I went to the planning board to add lots. After meeting with them, they asked me to reduce by forty-three lots, and so instead of having one of the four lakes, we did, we created all of this green space. This is all recreation open space, this is all additional buffer. So I'm hearing the dialogue about the production of more lots, but honestly, what we've done is we provided Phase One, probably around forty-four acres of open space rec and buffer from the ask of the planning board.
Right. I guess, I don't, personally, and I, I think the development looks great, I just think that right-hand corner, I, I don't like the development, I guess, the homes above that, your lake, you have a lake there, and then I just think that corner, I think it would be so much prettier with nothing behind that lake, I think it would just be gorgeous.
This is what you know to, I'm designing a project right here, and it's duplexes that are gonna be built next to those lots in the county, one hundred and sixty-three good points of Phase One of Alabakas. And then the triangle here is already in conservation, the old triangle, probably from where I have the red over. So there's already additional water. So you can see that small one in green, that small one in green, up to ninety-five, with the big one there that's in a conservation, the P blocks are actually gonna put up to duplexes in the county in Alabakas Plantation.
Okay, which, yeah. I don't think I have the exact right one.
Well, Mayor, if it helps move the discussion, I can support the recommendation from the planning board on, on Phase One, Phase Three, and also really, I can support, uh, the, yeah, the, the, um, the Phase Four recommendation also, yeah, the ninety lots on Phase Four, because I believe that will be a, I believe that's where you'll see some of the most affordable units in this entire development, and I think that's really important, to provide different price points, and especially the, the more cost-effective price points. Am I correct on that? Maybe, okay.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So, planning board denied Phase Four, denial three to four. And you know what, you're, you're right, and I'm glad that Mr. Mitchenberg got up and gave us a little more background that I'm sure, I don't know, but I know with me, he shared that with me on our one-to-one meeting, and I'm sure you all got the same, the same that I got, just because he's owned it for twenty years, and, and he knows it. And you're right, the planning board was able to negotiate down some numbers, so I could go along with the school site, I know Dwight, you're not there, but the school site being reduced by half, like you mentioned, to forty-five, and, and keeping the other phases the way they are. Is there a third vote for that? Because if there is, we can have a motion and a second, and move on. If there's not, then somebody needs to submit a different proposal.
Dwight is what's holding you up as you want the ninety? Why don't we purse it? Why don't we, I'll make a motion to approve Recommendation One and Recommendation Two, which is Phase One and Phase Three. At Phase One, at forty additional lots, and Phase Three, at forty-three additional lots.
Is there a second on this?
I second the motion.
We've been seconded, and any further discussion? Please call the board.
Commissioner Persis?
No.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And so now we're left with item five, Phase Four, the school site. And it, it's at ninety lots, I mean, my thinking was those lots closest to ninety-five are the least desirable, possibly the hardest to sell, I mean, I guess, I don't know, even at the lowest price point, it's such a quality project and such a great neighborhood. And behind this whole discussion, too, you gotta remember, it was four thousand units cut in half to two thousand, and now we're down to seventeen hundred, give or take. So it's going down, 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 it's just a matter of where we're at on this Phase Four.
Mayor, if I may, I'm gonna call on that.
Yes, sir.
In order to build the school site, that's a thing that has to be paid, and that station has to be built, a water line. When you get down below, kind of what I'm asking, ninety, forty-five lots, it's not gonna be feasible to develop there. I'm contemplating asking you guys to pay for the school site, uh, plate, and to come back at another point in time to look for entitlements for it, but forty-five lots for me there, it's not gonna be, with all the, short past, we're gonna have forty-five lots here, forty thousand dollars station, you know, just enough to develop more. You know, the point that I wanted to make is, we have a certain density, I'll let Mr. Spraker kinda speak to this, but we have, right now, the school site is zoned, S F, single bed, but there's no units there. The S F zoning category allows the school, it allows expeditions, it allows blowhard storage, and a few other uses, essential utilities, et cetera. So, you know, a possibility there just to reduce the blowhard storage, and not ask for changes.
Which is wildly popular right now. People are looking for that.
I think, you know, and, and as Persis, I understand your point exactly.
No, first, not the first one.
I think I'll go with the forty, forty-three, but on the school site, the hundred and twenty-five lots would increase the last, my thing. Reducing it to ninety would so much more increase the last, cutting in and out... Reducing it to ninety was so much more reasonable as, cutting it down, Mayor, that's, that's not a reasonable thing for me to do. So if, is the, the board wants to cut the ninety and the forty-five, I would request we just don't do anything with it, make the current zone.
All right. And Stephen and Randy, if we just don't do anything on Phase Four, how, what's the best way to?
Yeah, I, I think what you do is you just do a motion to deny that particular phase, and then it'll leave it pretty much as it is, and then if circumstances change in the future, then they can come back, and if not, then they can just deal with it.
I, I do know developer is kind of accumulating the lots in the property south of U.S. One, so maybe it'd be more appropriate to add, or to need in the future, you guys can consider something lower listed than that, but I think if I had a choice, forty-five lots versus let's take it off the table, I'd go with that.
Fair enough. Yep. And, you know, I, it's not good to do public math, Joyce always tells us, or at least she tells her staff that. But, you know, with not, if it didn't seem like there was any motion on ninety, I suggested a number, and I didn't get any bites on that, so I think that tells you, you're making a good decision, that, you know, is there a motion to deny Item Five, Phase Four?
I'm, I'm just curious, do we have to deny it? I mean, not that, I mean, are you a, I mean, it sounds like you're withdrawing this request, is that, can, can the applicant do that?
That would be preferable to a denial. I think, you know, you guys can make a motion, say it's forty-five lots, I can't deliver the forty-five lots. So, you know, part of me was saying, okay, well, give me forty-five lots and I'll walk away, but I think that if I can withdraw a request for rezoning on the school site, come back another time on that, that would be my preference for. I may look in, you know, design the people that are in the area, that just feel comfortable, discover one, I'm doing a lot of fly work, so I don't know. So I really think though, and this is, you know, lifelong resident, live around the corner of this, the best use for that property would be the ninety lots, the public streets would give another price point that, that my kids go for, because they won't be able to afford to live in a gated apartment. With the private streets, you don't have the bigger HOA Bs because of the public streets and what have you. So I think I'd love to get out of here with ninety lots if I could, but if the...
What's the, what's the motion you can do to make it work?
I, I already went from...
I know, you're saying from one twenty to ninety.
All right, so I'm taking lots, I think I can look at that, never work with the situation.
I'll just say, I, I fled the idea of no development on Phase Four, but I was convinced by the price, you know, the cost that Mr. Mitchenberg is going to put out was paving the road there, and the, you know, dealing with the affordable housing issue in the community, it kind of convinced me that I'm okay with the ninety. I mean, that, that's where I stand now.
And Parker, you said there's no trees, that there's very little trees because of the fire, is that, is that correct?
If you look at the site, back we have the wildfire.
Right.
Approximately four hundred acres of it here.
Right.
And there's secondary growth, and you know, people have talked about, oh, you know, they cleared the property, all this. Well, that secondary growth in the summertime is a fire hazard, so we kept, we kept it pretty clear. We originally cleared the golf course corridors, we got to build the golf course, the first thing we did was we cleared the golf course, all the races cleared, and so we kept them clear, but now I have residents that I don't want to have a fire. I actually had a fire break out last summer, a backdrop in this area, burned about three acres. Orman Fire Department came and put it out, they did a great job. More recently, was probably about, I don't know, two months ago, playing pickleball, it's all a big smoke thing, and lightning strike, getting a weapon, probably a couple pine trees on fire. So that's part of the reason, one, that it's already cleared, because it burnt that side of the plantation of the old owners previously. And what I've done with this revised plan on the, the ninety lots is, this is Heavenly Tree, this area here, there's a big wooden weapon. So you see that lake, that's about twenty-eight acres, there's about twenty-eight acres next to it, that's tree plus weapons that would remain in this development, in this phase. So I kind of hear the heavenly tree space, but I design a lot of some of the subdivision is two units acre, most of them are three to four. This subdivision has a couple hundred acres of open space, we've got fifty-foot buffers along plantation of the old heart, fifty-foot buffer along ninety-five, and they're a lot bigger than that in some areas, and we did have a hundred and seventy-five foot buffer along Old Dixie. So we've really gone above and beyond what anybody else has done, in Orman or Deaton as far as buffer days.
Mr. Mayor, I heard Mr. Mitchenberg say, he did his quick math here, that he could bring it down by ten to eighty, I'm going to make a motion for Phase Four to allow eighty homes.
Second.
I, I have a question, man, are there fish in that lake?
Yes.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes, even though I didn't get my way on the others, I am voting this, I am voting yes for this.
Mayor Partington?
Yes, and now on the entire motion as amended. We will, any further discussion? Commission, please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
This is on the whole thing.
What we already voted? Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And we'll move to, actually, I'll close the public hearings at this point. We will move to the opioid discussion, nine A, there's a opioid abatement funding advisory board appointment, and if there's any questions, I can call up Ann-Margaret to speak to this item. Actually, Ann-Margaret, if you would, come up and just give us a brief, brief synopsis.
As you know, she's seen a lot of the, the room is coming through, now we're kind of finally reaching the end of some of the old board rights coordination, and we expect payouts to come over a period of years, and there's going to be two points. There's going to be a plan that will come directly to the city, using the government foundation, and there's going to be plans to make equal price for them. And there's going to be a separate plan that will be a reasonable one, that will go to the two counties, but the kind of, understanding of the two county and all the other visiting counties last year, if you remember, and whether it's, you know, collective or how those ones are going to be used throughout the county. And part of that is we need to establish an advisory, advisory board that's going to recommend to, which is kind of helpful, how those, what these are going to be spent in the county. So every city and every county, basically, we want to have a advisory board, it is two year term, and it's expected to be, um, twice a year, based on trying to work with the advisory. And it'll be a separate trust, there'll be a lot more around, I mean, how this money is spent, what the best programs, the best use of it, and then maybe pull to the advisory committee, so for the best interest. We're actually thinking that once I start following, it's really a duty of the line, so we really need to make this advisory board on the, on the, on the, on the.
Any questions for Ann-Margaret?
I do, if, I believe they went over this at the elected official roundtable where, which me and you were at. This money is just from Walgreens, but other money's going to be coming from other lawsuits, right?
Yes, yes, and you've seen several actually went through, one actually through, and I've actually asked for a summary of the amounts that are going to come into this, and that's made right now, a quote-unquote, one sort of in front of the city and others that are quoted, the reasons for that, and I'm still looking for that, but this is a, I don't know. Here.
I, I have a question also, Mayor.
Commissioner.
Are there limitations on how the funds can be expended?
Yes, it, it really, it's somewhat general, it has to be related to a making of the economy during the crisis, and of course, that's probably different for the county versus, you know, each of the counties, like, you know, education, training, first responders, first emergency, things like that, I'm sure it's, it's, it's...
And the, the, there was a hundred and six thousand, I think it was, or something?
A hundred and that one's up.
Yeah, and is that's over multiple years, like ten years or five years, or how many?
It will be multiple years, I'm not exactly sure, but it's multiple years, but I'm hoping that if it goes down, it's less than that.
Right, okay, all right, very good. So do we, are we actually going to nominate somebody tonight, or is this just a discussion item?
It's going to be one of us, and I'm happy to do it, but I'm also happy to defer for someone else to do it. I see the opioid crisis effects every day in my day job for years, both in the criminal justice system and serving on the drug court. Dr. Farmer, Peggy Farmer's husband, who was the Surgeon General for the state of Florida, actually did an amazing job fixing the opioid problem. People were dying every day, they still continue to die, but not nearly the numbers that they were, but my passion with it is making sure that the dollars, I mean, Narcan's okay, you need a certain amount of that, it can be abused, but getting the dollars into treatment, both mental health and addiction, because those two things are so inextricably entwined, that you need treatment beds, you need outpatient treatment for follow-up care, and the dollars need to be spent in a way, whether it's through Stuart Marchman, or Epic, or the Deland Men's Residential Treatment, or Phoenix House, or, or whatever program is available to put these individuals into, we need to make sure that those dollars are there to get people the help that they need, and that's generally anywhere from sixty days to a year and a half treatment programs, sometimes multiple times before it actually takes effect. And also, where you can get the biggest bang for the, for the buck, which is pregnant mothers who have addiction problems, making sure they get clean, stay clean, and deliver a healthy baby can save millions and millions of dollars on our healthcare system. So I'm passionate about that, but time-wise, depending on the amount of additional time that's involved, with just with everything else, TPO has been brutal lately as far as the time, time pressure, that's why I'm happy to let somebody else do it, but I just hope, I want to have my say as far as getting them to drive those particular points home. You know, drug courts work, they do amazing work, they're still underfunded, although they've gotten more funding lately because people see the recidivism numbers coming down. And of course, some training for our cities, city folks in the Narcan, those are important as well.
Well, I'd like to nominate you, Mayor, because you have passion and knowledge, and, and I think, unless you nominate, did you nominate yourself? I'm not sure, maybe I'm just seconding your, your nomination.
You talked yourself right into it.
And it's only two meetings a year, so it won't take much time.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you for that. And do you want to vote on that, Joyce, or Rand?
We've got to make the consensus.
Is that enough, or you need to vote? Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, like sign, and thank you.
You're welcome.
Now we move to reports, suggestions, and requests, and we start with City Manager Joyce Shanahan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. First of all, first of all, I would just like to say a few words about the Police Unity Tour. The Police Unity Tour is a four-day bicycle ride, three hundred miles from locations across the country to Washington DC, and they raise money and awareness for law enforcement officers who have died in the line of duty. And you can see pictures right there of our chief riding into town. We're so very proud of you. Since nineteen ninety-seven, each of the nine chapters of the Police Unity Tour has hosted a ride with the purpose of not only raising awareness, but of officers who have died in the line of duty, but also to raise funds for the National Law Enforcement Memorial. We will never be able to repay the sacrifice of the fallen and their families, but we can honor them, and that is what every participant of the Unity Tour did. So again, Chief Godfrey, we're very proud of you for your efforts. We know you do it to respect the fallen and honor them, and so we appreciate you even more for that. Secondly, tonight, I would like to make you aware that Lieutenant Willis is currently in our FBI Academy, the FBI Academy up in Quantico, is that where it is? She's in week six out of ten. For those of you that don't know, when you go to the FBI Academy, you have to stay there for those ten weeks, which is a real sacrifice for someone that has a family and, and young children, and Chief Godfrey did it, Captain Roos did it. You have to qualify to go, you have to have a physical fitness test, you have to have all of your vaccines, you know, the military likes you to have a hundred and ten of those, so, so we're very proud of Lieutenant Willis, and when she comes back, we'll be sure to bring her back to the commission and recognize her for an outstanding achievement, so we're very proud of her. Just a brief recap of the OB Life Meeting, we had a hundred and forty people physically present in the room, about a hundred and thirty have reviewed it online. We've had a hundred and eighteen questions, a hundred and seventy-eight questions that we have to answer, and that's really the purpose of OB Life. We pull those questions out of the Fish Bowl, there's a hundred and seventy-eight of those, and we've committed to answering all of those by June third, and we post them online. We had a little hiccup with our live transmission, but a hundred and thirty people viewed it online, and they were also able to submit Fish Bowl questions, so we'll make sure that we answer those, and staff is working on it as we speak. Just a little calendar reminder, we have our June seventh meeting, you're going to have a budget workshop beforehand, and then you'll have your regular meeting, and then after that, the commission has a recess until July nineteenth, where we come back for your operating budget and a regular commission meeting. I did receive a response to my letter to Secretary Perdue, I don't know, did y'all get copies of that in the mail?
Yes.
I was grateful for his response, a little disappointed that only three point three million for right-of-way dollars has been earmarked thus far, but this is a work in progress, just to get a, a holder, a placeholder in the budget is, is key there. And the last thing I would like to talk to you tonight about is our agenda management software, and I think we've got a PowerPoint for that, is that right, Stephen? Let that come up. So currently, we are using MinuteTrack, and we've been using that since two thousand twelve. That's no longer being enhanced or upgraded, and it's minimally supported, so we can't, if there's something that goes kifflie with it, we can't get it fixed. We have worked with Civic Clerk, they own Civic Plus, which does our website, and they also acquired MuniCode, which hosts our code of ordinances and land development code. It's a cloud-based product, it's accessible through a secure web browser, has a username and password, and there will be a shortcut on your iPad. What you see is your regular staff memo, there'll be no changes to that, that'll be the same format. There'll be a new cover sheet, hopefully Commissioner Selby, you'll get to see this before you leave office, but it gives you a summary sheet for every agenda item, so you'll just be able to look at that first. And some of the options include live streaming and on-demand video, so we could enhance the chambers to provide live streaming of the commission meetings. It's integrated video content into meeting agendas, it bookmarks and navigates topics, and has closed caption available for a third party, and we're required to do that when we do live streaming. So our plan is to, it was within my spending authority, it's pretty reasonable, I can't even remember, low price, but we were going to implement it on September twenty-eighth through twenty, September twenty-second through the twenty-eighth, we'll have individual meetings with the commission. The first date to go live for it will be October fourth, and media and video enhancements will be determined at a later date. So we just want... So we just wanted to brief you on that. We'll give you plenty of time, staff will be training on the current software and the old so, the old software and the new software, and we'll give you plenty of time to get used to it. But we just wanna let you know where we're at with that project. That was one of the charges that we've had for a while, was to upgrade that, I think it was part of the strategic plan as well, so that's where we are with that. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions for Joyce?
I only have one, where if, Mr. Finley could talk about the A-1A project that we've been working on.
I think we have an update coming on that, too.
I did, I went up okay with the, I heard it was the representative, thousands of help in the budget. They told me that if you voicemail, the project is still moving forward, they are going to change the help needed in the budget, I know that they're going to slightly do to it, I don't think it's basically a number of costs, but I'll be more detailed in the period, just to be, kind of, prepared for that. We do have a meeting tomorrow, Joyce and I, to kind of preview all the meetings, to be helped to discuss more data, which was kind of a surprise for us, we were focusing on this out there, and we had a lot of residents who are concerned with more data, getting across from those residents in the areas to be excited as well, so that's more forthcoming about the meeting, and we'll spend, make time to all of it.
I just wanna briefly commission that at an elected officials roundtable meeting, I think her name's Anna Taylor from the TPO, told me that the A-1A project, which was slated for two million dollars, is now like four point five million dollars. And an amendment's coming at the TPO next Wednesday, you know, to be voted on, and so I was just fearful that that project, which we've spent a lot of our staff time on, and our own, you know, citizens definitely want, isn't pushed back, but it looks like it's not going to be, which is nice.
And I think that when you get into your budget workshops, especially for capital, you may be surprised at some of the escalation in costs for some of those projects, so we're trying to ferret all of that out now. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley.
Brief, but hopefully well-timed comment here on the heels of the reclaimed water and storage workshop. This week is National Public Works Week. It's a week dedicated to recognizing all of the employees that work together to keep our city's infrastructure running smoothly every single day. This year's theme is ready and resilient, and we cannot think of a better way to describe our employees here at Ormond Beach, who are always ready to serve our customers, whether it's a broken water line, or clearing the roads after hurricanes. Their dedication to taking care of Ormond Beach and the people who live here is unmatched, and we look forward to celebrating with them all week. And thank you to Sean Finley, the Public Works Director.
Thank you, Claire. City Attorney Randy Hayes.
No, sir, thank you. Good night.
Thank you. And tonight, we start, Commissioner, comments, reports, suggestions, and requests with Deputy Mayor Persis.
Great. Good evening, everyone. I have a couple of announcements. I went with the mayor and, let's see, Commissioner Selby and myself, we went to the police swearing-in on, on April fifth, excuse me, May fifth, not April, time seems to be passing, passing so quickly, it's almost June, but we, the, Chief Godfrey's fore and fore police officers, it was very exciting to see them get sworn in, have them pinned by their family, it was just a very wonderful event, and again, Chief Godfrey, you do such a great job when you, when you do the swearing-in, it's very much noticed and appreciated. And the entire Commission attended the memorial art and museum and gardens ribbon-cutting also, which is just a absolute gem in, at the corner of Granada and Halifax Drive. It's just an amazing place, if you haven't been there, you have to go, the artwork in there is absolutely beautiful. There are tiles around the outside area where there's a courtyard, and people in the community had the opportunity to buy a tile, a tile and paint it, and they're, they're wrapped all around this like low, I don't know, it's like, it's not a, like a wall, but it's a very low wall, you could almost sit on it. And so you have kids, adults, and other people that, that decorate it, so it's just very, very pretty, but it's just something that just adds to the charm of Ormond Beach, especially right there on the beach side. And lastly, the mayor and Commissioner Kent and I went to the Police Unity Tour that Joyce Shanahan just told you about, and it was one of the most moving things I've ever done in my whole life, to see all these men writing for people who have, that are fallen officers or detectives, you know, in the United States. And just very moving, brought tears to your eyes, but yes, but yes, we were clapping, we were cheer, we were cheering these bikers on, and we saw Chief Godfrey come around the corner and his groove that came by, and it was just so, so exciting. And to see the support out there for police officers, I think it's growing and growing, and it needs to continue to grow. I was just so glad to be a part of it and see it, and, and kind of experience kind of what they feel each and every day, so I was just very grateful to be able to attend, and it's, you know, made a big difference in my, my life. And Chief Godfrey, thank you again for what you did, and please let all the police officers know how proud and how much we appreciate it, than we, that we are. And thank you, and that's, that's the end of my comments. Good night.
Thank you. Commissioner Littleton.
Thank you, Mayor. The opening of the Ormond Memorial Art Museum and Gardens, that is something special that we have in Ormond Beach. I've been eating at Wild Rabbit Bistro a couple times in the last few weeks, and as I walked there, I walked past the McDonald House, which is looking better than it ever has ever, and is gonna be a staple in this community for a long time, probably another hundred years. And I walked past Wild Rabbit Bistro, just to look at the thing after the opening, and the sign is cool, I mean, that whole corner, that whole area, it's, it's a renaissance, and it's, it's gonna be spectacular. We know what's coming down the pike there with the publics and other developments or redevelopments there, and I think beachside Ormond Beach is going to be, is going to take on New Smyrna Beach very soon. And I'll end with the Police Unity Tour. Unfortunately, I could not go to DC with you guys, but I have ne, I don't think I've ever been more proud, I was proud of the commissioners that went, I was proud of the chief, that, I was watching, you know, with the Facebook photos, and the whole event, again, made me proud to be a commissioner here, and I thank you for everything you guys have done and the support you were able to show far away from home. With that, I'll say good night.
Thank you. Commissioner Selby.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick comment tonight, we had a, for the benefit of the audience and those listening in, we had a workshop at five-thirty this afternoon on reclaimed water, and really specifically storage. We, we, this, this Commission recognized, and obviously staff knew this also, that the single biggest challenge for reclaimed water was storage. And we challenged staff to present to us on, on tonight, you know, by tonight, a plan to increase storage of reclaimed water, and they came to us with an amazing plan that's extremely cost-effective, that should get us to, once this plan is implemented with surface storage, creating a, a lake that's over a hundred acres, will allow us to be in a position where we never run out for all the users, and we don't have to pump any gallons into the intercoastal waterway, into the Halifax River. So I just wanted to say thank you very much to, to the leadership from Joyce, to Sean Finley, Alex Schuman, the city engineer, for, for bringing this plan together in, in really a very short time, and also for the work that you've done with the St. John's Water Management District, and others, I'm sure the DEP will be involved also to get as much grant funding as possible to make it as cost-effective. And I thought it was really interesting that in addition to this being Public Works Appreciation Week, it is also Water Reuse Week, okay, May fifteenth to the twenty-first, so our workshop on that, you know, coincided with, what better planning? You guys are geniuses, okay? And with that, I'll say good night. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner. Thank you.
Just a couple of items. The OB Life was informational. Staff, you did a great job, thank you, Joyce, with your leadership there. The re, grand reopening of the Art Museum and the Gardens was a spectacular event, you just have to brag, it's in Zone Two. I met with Dr. Tom Brown and Ms. Richmond a little over four years ago, and they, they had an idea, and I loved the idea, and I, I told them what I thought they needed to do. And I always respected that they, they wanted to meet with everybody, all the elected officials, but he said, you know, you're, you're our commissioner, this is your zone, we wanna make sure we get your input, and I appreciated that. So thank you to Ms. Richmond and to Dr. Tom Brown. Sean Finley and Alex, Joyce Shanahan, Commissioner Selby already said it, but I'm, I'm just gonna touch on it again. Our reuse workshop, you, you checked every single box that we asked about, you know, a hundred million gallon storage, right now, we have about ten million gallon, this is gonna, you know, times ten what we, what we currently have. It's going to help solve a problem, a desire that our residents have to use reuse on their lawns, but the bigger, the bigger problem that it solves is it stops dumping reused water into the Halifax River, and that is extremely positive. Thank you very much on that. I'm gonna end with the, the Police Unity Tour. It's my first time going, and, you know, a couple of things I'll tell you about it. So they ride about three hundred miles, like two ninety-five or two ninety-seven, Chief, we're just gonna say three hundred miles, because then you had to ride from the police officer memorial, another five or six miles to your hotel, so let's now say three, three oh-two, okay? But who's counting? We're counting every single, every single one of them. And, you know, I, I got there Wednesday night, I took a couple days off from work to be there, and the main reason I did it was I wanted our chief to, to see me, and I'm glad, you know, some other commissioners and the mayor could go, and those that couldn't, I get it, I, I never could go before, you know, it's just schedules, and life, and family, and work, and I didn't want, I wanted the chief to see the support. So I got down, I went down there a little early just to get my bearings on the place, I'd never, I'd never been to this memorial, and I, you know, you don't know what you don't know, and I didn't know that there was a memorial wall with the names etched in of all of the fallen officers. And then I see these guys laying on the ground, etching their, their friend's name in, and you see, you know, a seven or eight-year-old boy standing there who, you know, he's, he's not gonna see his mom or dad again, and it was emotional, it was moving, it was powerful, it was needed. And, you know, then I felt like we waited forever for chief to come around the corner. But I'll say this about our chief, he was in the lead with his group, so they come, they come in waves, and, and in his, yep, yep, and, and in, and in his wave, he was in the lead, and, you know, he was grinning ear to ear. But I'm gonna tell you this, this three hundred miles is treacherous, I think it's like from Richmond to Washington DC, and I've met several individuals there, you know, of course, when I saw someone from Florida, we saw the group from Daytona Beach for Officer Rayner, they had his name on the back of their shirts. I met an officer from the University of Central Florida, and they had some road rash on their legs, like, what's happening? You know, these, these aren't like, you know, Troy Kent riding his bike with his son Wyatt around the neighborhood, I mean, these guys trained for this, and the chief said it was some of the most difficult headwinds he's ever experienced in this ride, and, and it was, it was not an easy task, and I appreciate you doing something that's not easy, and I appreciate this Commission approving all of us to take the trip, because, you know, we've gotta get approval, and it's important for us to come back and report to you, because you're our bosses, and you approve it, you allow us, allow us to do this, and that's long and belabored, but at the end of all of it, here's the takeaway, we have a damn good chief, and we're extremely proud of him, and the sacrifice that, that not only he makes, but all of the men and women in blue make. And I'll also tell you this, Mayor Partington and I, we found Robert Grimm's name, and Robert Grimm, I, I grew up with his daughter, Tiffany, she's a year ahead of me, growing up in school, and we made sure that we went and found his exact location, where his name was located, and we etched his name so that when we see Tiffany and/or her mother, we can give her that etching from the mayor and the commissioner, because we were, we were thinking of him, you know. Unfortunately, his name is on, is on that wall, but it's on that wall forever. So with that, listen, have a great evening, go home and hug your, and kiss your loved ones. Good night.
Thank you, Commissioner, and I'll start with the Unity Tour as well.
Can you talk about Waltz? Because I was gonna say something.
I sure will.
I forgot about Waltz, it was a great meeting at Waltz.
We did.
The motorcycles, that, that was, that was protecting them.
I'll do that as well. Yep, thank you. The, there's just so much to say about it. It was, it was emotional, more so than I expected, sobering, and I was glad that I could be there to show the chief and our department how much we appreciate them and thank them for what they do every day. Officer Grimm was killed tragically and senselessly at a, at a traffic stop, there's no such thing as a routine traffic stop, and so to see his name on there, just really brought it home. The whole trip, the entire Police Unity Tour and Police Week, one, I've never felt so safe, I mean, we were surrounded by probably five thousand officers at the memorial, and two, the ceremonies were so moving, they would call out each officer's name, and there were family there, some dealing with fresh, raw emotions from a horrible incident, others, it had been years since it had happened, and they were there to pay their respects and, and honor their loved ones, but it's, I'm glad that our chief and, and other officers in our department participate. Some years, it's three or four people, other years, it's one person, but they make the effort, and the motorcycle folks who accompany them, I don't know how many there, there were, seventy or eighty different motorcycles, just a ton of motorcycles, and departments from all over the country send their, ship their motorcycles there to accompany them along the three-hundred-mile ride, and so that's, that is something to see as well. And they had a parade of those after all the bikers came through, the motorcycle officers came through as well, but it was moving, emotionally exhausting, it was two days in DC, really, Wednesday night was a travel night, and early, early Saturday morning was a travel morning. Yep, Thursday morning, I went out to Arlington Cemetery, and I mention this, 'cause it's important to me to remind our residents that we had two young men who had amazing upbringings in this city, Timothy Brenneman of the Brenneman family, and then Drew Delicker of the Delicker family. Wonderful families, both of these young men killed in forced training accidents, Tim in an Army helicopter crash, Drew in an Air Force plane crash. Tim, I think, was twenty, well, maybe, maybe early thirties, Drew was twenty-six or twenty-seven, but they wanted to serve their country, and they did, and they lost their lives in that service, and I've seen, I know Commissioner Kent has seen, and maybe some of the other commissioners, the, the pain that that has inflicted on those families, I feel bad about that, but I think our residents need to know about it, so they can appreciate their service, they can appreciate the freedom that they live in, and, and remember and honor and respect those families, so it was important to me to go out to Arlington and, and stop by and, and pay my respects to each of their grave sites. Then, of course, the rest of the day, Thursday, we were at the memorial, serviced the ride-in, got to greet the chief, which was awesome, there are a ton of police che, chief There are a ton of police chief Jesse Godfrey look-alikes that were in the ride. I think we saw six or seven that we thought were him and then, then he finally appeared. But again, a great spirit and tremendous support out there. It was awesome to be a part of that. The next day, like Commissioner Kent said, we did the, the etchings and that was moving. Later that afternoon, we met with, had a wonderful meeting, probably one of the best meetings we've ever had with Congressman Waltz, got briefed on a number of issues. And so he's there for us. He fights for us every day and he took the time, really quite a bit of time, to meet with all three of us and give us, give us that update. So we appreciate that. And then Friday night, there was a memorial service on the National Lawn that was, I mean, it was candlelight, so there's, I think, 30,000 or 40,000 people out there. The candle light was incredible. Beautiful singers, incredible bagpipe performances, moving tap ceremony. And so just a, a busy, busy time, but well worth, I think, the effort and the time we took from our personal lives to go. And so, chief, thank you. You didn't ask us to go, but we wanted to be there to support you because we appreciate you and think that, think that much of you. So that's DC. I think I covered everything you all wanted me to. The police swearing-in ceremony here was great, those four young officers and their families, really optimistic and looking forward to the future with them. I told them congratulations, welcome. And then I borrowed a line from the roll call sergeant on Hill Street Blues. I said, let's be careful out there. He would say that at the end of every roll call on that show, going back to the 80s. I did want to point out that the new Ace Hardware up on North US One opened yesterday, soft opening, and they'll have a grand opening celebration at some point that I think, expect we'll all be invited to, but just wanted to point that out. There's been a lot of excitement about that. Ormond Memorial Art Museum, you all covered it. It was incredible and we're just lucky to have that facility. It's as beautiful at night as it is during the daytime when it's all lit up. And when you walked around it, I mean, I couldn't believe that they found the space that they found and managed to protect the entire gardens all at the same time. It's going to be an amazing addition to that corner. And like Commissioner Littleton alluded to, there's just a lot of synergy going on there right now with, with the new Publix, that, some condominiums going in there. It's really going to be, it's going to be fantastic, so we're excited about that. Sunday, I had the opportunity to speak at baccalaureate for the graduating senior class of Seabreeze High School, 2022 graduates. And so congratulations to all the graduates everywhere. It's an exciting time for those families. It's a very busy time for those families, but just wanted to mention that. Any of the folks that participated and, and also won awards in the mayor's fitness challenge, congratulations to each of you. When you improve yourselves, you make our city better. And if just one person has a major life-changing opportunity during that, even though hundreds participate, it's worth, worth having it and doing it. And the young lady that came up tonight said, I don't know if you heard it, that it had changed her life. And so that's, yeah, that's heartwarming. Heartwarming to hear that. Also, Monday morning, I went to Ormond Beach Elementary and helped the Kiwanis kick off their Kiwanis Reads program. And that was fantastic. It's a great summer reading program for those children. Literacy is so important for children because it gives them a strong sense of self-worth, helps them improve their lives and their family's lives. It helps them excel in school and ultimately get better jobs and be able to support themselves. So it was great to be there for that. I also talked to Craig Frick, who is, has opened the Ice Cream Scoop, which is the new ice cream store there. They're sponsoring the summer reading program. And what better incentive for a child than an ice cream party with gummy bears and all the toppings at the end of, of the summer, as long as they meet their goals, which I, I think they'll meet and they'll exceed. Also, the one child who reads the most will get a year of free ice cream. So if that's not incentive, I don't know what is, but congratulations to them. And it, just talking to Craig, you know, a young entrepreneur in our city who's excited about the future of the downtown, that was, that was incredible as well. Um, let's see. Also, today I listened to a webinar given by 1,000 Friends of Florida, which is an environmental group out of Tallahassee, pretty well-known, pretty well-respected. The title of the webinar was Free the Oklawaha River. It's a river that runs from Silver Springs up to just north, north side of Lake George. And it was cut off by the Rodman Dam many years ago as part of the Cross Florida Barge Canal Project, which was ill-fated and ill-advised. That project has long since been canceled, but, and the dam is failing. What they want to do is, is remove the dam, restore the river to its natural flow, and there will be huge, all the science shows huge environmental improvements to the water quality and the flow of the St. John's River. And many fish species will benefit as well. So just wanted to point that out. You talked about the reuse and reclaimed water. This commission being good environmental stewards, making good progress with that. And then there's other areas around our state that need our support as well. And you can go to freetheoklawaha.com for more, more information on that. And then finally, tonight, I think the OB Life series was fantastic. I thought, you know, you heard both sides, it kind of crystallized the debate. Probably the main point was there were only going to be, with the 600-foot runway extension, not even one furlong, there would be two or maybe three additional operations a day. So one more plane might land or take off, or two more planes might land and one might take off. I mean, very, very little increase in air traffic. And then also, all the same types, classes of aircrafts, no additional or new or larger types or classes of aircraft would be able to use the airport. And so I thought those were some of the main points. I know those questions are going to continue to be answered. And we didn't have to do that, maybe as the last point, but we felt like it was important for transparency purposes to get those questions answered and get the information from the experts. So I'm glad we did do that. And now with all that, with all the, with all those great things going on in the city, I'm excited to announce that I am running for an additional term as mayor. I've been filed now for months and the support that I've gotten has been incredible. I'm so appreciative of, of all the support and I look forward to serving another two years. It's been fun. I like to run, get out there, shake hands, press the flesh, talk to people about the issues, kind of like the OB Life series. It was just the excitement, the buzz in the room. And we don't have to agree all the time. It's actually good to have healthy discussions and, and kick ideas around, but I look forward to it and I'm as passionate about it as ever, especially as I see us making these accomplishments, whether it's for the environment or reductions and developments and working hard to, to serve the public. So with that, I will say we are adjourned and good night.